We're going to begin with appointments. And so, do we have Mr. Goldstein here? Mr. Goldstein is being nominated to be the Baltimore County -- to be on the Baltimore County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. Mr. Secretary, is Mr. Goldstein here?
He's online.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bel Castro.
Mr. Goldstein, you are a panelist. You can unmute yourself.
Mr. Goldstein, thank you for joining us. And we have you as being nominated for the Baltimore County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. And just if you wanted to say anything about your background or your interest in this, it would be helpful to the council.
Sure, I've been on the board for almost 20 years. I'm a medical malpractice defense attorney. I used to do guardianship work for some local hospitals and got interested in it by doing the individual work I was doing. I was asked to be on the board, and I've served on the board for probably the last 15 or 20 years as a volunteer. I enjoy what I'm doing. I think we do a good service for folks who don't have anybody else to be their guardians, and I'm happy to be reappointed again.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Do any of the members have any comments, questions, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Goldstein? Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Do you reside in Baltimore County or Carroll County?
I reside in Carroll County. My office is in Baltimore County in Lutherville.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you very much, Mr. Goldstein.
You are welcome. Any other questions?
Any members have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Appreciate your time.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay. Next item will be Bill 124. This is sponsored by Councilman Catch, related to zoning regulations. Councilman Catch, do you want to discuss your bill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I had asked that the bill be delayed for several weeks to work out some issues. I can't see -- is Mr. Benjamin there?
We do not have Mr. Benjamin. We have, from the Law Department, Deputy Counsel Mara.
Okay. From what I understand, the issue with the bill, with the Law Department, had been resolved with discussions with Mr. Benjamin. I just didn't want to make the statement without the Law Office making a comment.
Mr. Mara?
Mr. Chair, I would advise...
Okay, I'm going to ask. So, I'm going to make a motion to close this session. Do I need a second on that, Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Can I ask the members to just step into the back room for just a second with Mr. Mara?
Councilman, I think they're going to reach out to you via phone.
Okay, got it.
Okay. I'm going to mute you on the WebEx, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Can you also turn your camera off, Councilman Catch, while you're on your call?
Councilman Johnson's coming in, I think. Okay. Apologize for that. We had to consult with legal counsel for just a moment to just clear up some issues. And so, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene into open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you again. My apologies to everyone that's participating in today's meeting. And so, let's go back to where we were. We're going to hear testimony on 124.
Mr. Chairman, may I just...
Councilman Catch.
Thank you very much. What this bill does is, I guess many of you realize that the Hunt Valley Inn is closed. There are -- there's a fence around it, and the -- there's a company interested in, in essence, tearing the Hunt Valley Inn down and constructing 290 townhouses in its place. And with the need for housing, and, you know, I just think that this is the way to go. I mean, there's no doubt about our -- the fact that people are looking for housing. We're looking at townhouses, some of them townhouse over townhouse, which hopefully will reduce the cost. So, I just think this is a good move. It's right next to the light rail. I mean, it meets every condition that we're trying to achieve, which is to get cars off the road, get people to use mass transit, provide housing that is not overly expensive. So, you know, I think this bill is a move in the right direction, and it does follow the administration's goals of producing housing near mass transit. It literally is within walking distance of the light rail. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Ms. Bel Castro, we have speakers on this item.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have two speakers registered today. The first speaker is Danielle Simons. I have been unable to locate him on our attendee list. So, I am going to move on to the next registered speaker, who is David Karceski. Mr. Karceski, you are on. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Mr. Karceski?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Potoka, members of the county council. My name is David Karceski. I'm a land use attorney with Venable, LLP, and Towson. I'm speaking in support of County Council Bill 1-24 regarding residential uses in the Hunt Valley area. Council Bill 124 will expand the variety of housing stock available in a certain area of Hunt Valley. For a property to utilize this legislation, certain conditions have to be met, including the property would have to be located in the Hunt Valley, Timonium Master Plan focus area. That's a community plan that was adopted by the county council. That area is delineated in that community plan. The property would have to be located west of I-83 and south of Shawan Road and be within a certain distance of the CT overlay district of Hunt Valley. This is a beneficial piece of legislation, given that Hunt Valley is home to numerous major employers, whose employees will be able to take advantage of additional housing options close to where they work. In addition, Hunt Valley Town Center is a vibrant mixed-use town center that nearby residents will be able to enjoy with frequency and with convenience. In this regard, the legislation is an opportunity to enhance the live-work-play environment in this area. The Hunt Valley Business Forum supports Bill 124. I represent the owner of 245 Shawan Road, which is one of the -- which is a property located south of Shawan Road. This property is improved with a hotel building and a large parking field with hundreds of unused surface parking spaces. The hotel, which operated on the property for decades, has closed its doors and will not reopen. Redevelopment of this property is an example of the opportunity that Council Bill 124 creates for this area. This legislation will allow for an underperforming property be transformed and be part of a larger, well-rounded, mixed-use Hunt Valley environment. Thank you, Councilman Catch, for all the time, resources, and attention that you and your office have spent with the best interests of the Hunt Valley area in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karceski. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts from Mr. Karceski?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Catch.
Yes. I want to thank him for all his work in crafting this bill. And let me just add the fact that this is going to greatly enhance the tax base in Baltimore County by providing -- these are owner -- will be owner-occupied townhouses. Mr. Chairman, I can't see the audience. Director Lafferty there?
Director Lafferty is here.
Is here. I just have a question.
Councilman Catch.
About a week or so ago, Director Lafferty spoke with me about some concerns that he had with the bill, I believe, with setback. And he was -- his office was going to get back to me with amendments. I don't know if they've had another look at the bill and are now okay with it. Could you...
Director Lafferty, you want to come up and chat with Councilman Catch?
Thank you, Director Lafferty.
Certainly, Councilman, and good afternoon, members of the county council. Councilman, we did draft some potential amendments. We then became aware that there may have been some other issues, and in fact, as you recall, you did defer the bill till tonight. So, I do have some draft amendments that I can get over to you tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And can you tell me what these amendments address?
Yes, sir. As we discussed when I was talking with you previously, it has to do with the setbacks, which right now are 10 feet on the side and on the rear, which we believe is too small. The amount of open space, which under the county standards now would be 290,000 square feet, this bill would provide at least 70,000. Additionally, there are no connectivity off the site, and although it may be proximate to transit, there's no connections that are being reflected in the plans, at least we've been shared. We also believe the number of units for 17 acres is probably an overabundance of units, even though we certainly need homeownership. There are a couple of other things I just don't recall off the top of my head that, as I said, present those to you and happy to follow through and talk with you further.
I don't know if Mr. Karceski is still on the line, but have you been provided with the proposal which shows the open space and shows the location of the townhomes?
We have seen a concept plan, but nothing more specific than that.
Yeah, I don't know that you're going to get anything more specific than that, because after all, it's they don't have -- without this bill, they don't have the ability to, you know, to go forward with the plans. So, I look forward to looking at your amendments and hopefully, you know, soon as I go, we can work with the potential developer and hopefully resolve this issue, because as you have said, and the county executive has said, that we're really, as a county, in need of housing. And, you know, I'm very familiar with the area. Believe me, you can access the light rail from this site. And so, I, you know, that really isn't a concern. So, I look forward to getting your amendments and sharing them with the developer. And as I said, you know, some of the homes will be townhomes over homes, which we've seen in other parts of the county. So, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to resolve this and have the opportunity for additional housing in the county that is accessible to mass transit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Thank you, Director Lafferty. Okay, I understand we do have Mr. Simmons online. Ms. Bel Castro, if you could give him some connectivity?
Yes. Mr. Simmons, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony and unmute yourself.
See, I'm not familiar with this program. Is that me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, you don't need to see me. You just need to hear me, and I do appreciate you're allowing me to speak. I've been very interested in this project, because I've lived in the neighborhood that is proposed to be developed for over 50 years. And I'm just astounded now, as I see it, there are two issues here. The bill that was -- that I thought you would be working on essentially turns over authority for the zoning to the county. And it gives up, as I see it, the input and the right of the citizens to work with their council members to, you know, impact their living conditions.
Mr. Simmons, this is...
Dr. Simons, yes.
Yeah, Dr., you're talking about a different bill. You're talking about Bill 324.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I apologize. That's what I thought at this meeting.
No problem whatsoever, and that will be heard later on. This bill is initiated by me as your councilman, and also with the input from the various associations in the Hunt Valley area. So, I share your concerns about another piece of legislation that you're speaking of, and I certainly appreciate you calling. And hopefully, you know, when this bill comes up, I -- and I'll have to refer to the chairman. You know, we certainly want to hear your testimony. Mr. Chairman, can you tell me the situation with Council Bill 324?
So, currently, 324 is scheduled for work session February 27.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I haven't looked at your most recent -- I've been following your excellent work, Councilman Catch, and I really appreciate your efforts. I mean, I think you do feel -- have a feeling for how the residents in this area feel.
Yes.
And there's very strong feeling against this development. And what really gets me is that, you know, when I moved here 50 years ago, there was a plan to develop the county. And I think, you know, it seemed at that time pretty sensible. There was a lot of development opportunity over White Marsh, and the first things that they did before they developed it, they put in the infrastructure, so that the development was over the infrastructure. Now, here we're retrofitting a beautiful community, which many of us feel very strongly about. It's very historic, and you're going to throw this huge development to totally destroy the community, our lower Louisville, below Timonium. It's right next to Old Louisville, and it's just awful, just terrible. And it only benefits, to me, a very few people. Now, there's been, in the 50 years I've lived here, huge development in this area. I mean, let's face it, the Cockyville has massive numbers of probably low-income housing, and that's worked out very well. In just the last few years, we've seen Hunt Valley just, you know, explosive development, so that York Road, our main thoroughfare, is almost impassable at some times in the day. I have been on York Road at 4:00 when an EMT vehicle couldn't get through. And I mean, we just can't -- we can't accept it. And I mean, you're going to be driving people who've lived here 50 years to live somewhere else, because it'll just, you know, destroy this whole area.
Thank you for your input, Dr. Simmons.
Simmons...
Bel Castro.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Yeah. This is Councilman Catch. This bill is -- relates to property nowhere near Stark-Lutherville.
Okay.
It just -- it relates to property that is just about adjacent to the light rail on south of Shawan Road. So, rest assured, we're okay with this.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's all been developed above Shawan Road, so I guess I don't see any -- I guess that would be over by McCormick Avenue, would it? Or I'm not quite visualizing that.
Yeah, it would be -- do you know where the Sears store was at the mall?
Oh, yes, I sure do.
Right across the street, where the Hunt Valley Inn is.
Okay.
That's...
Okay, well, that's no problem to me. I just misunderstood what we were meeting about today.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Dr. Simmons?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Okay.
I think you have used the amount of time allotted, but your testimony was very strong. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Catch. I really appreciate all you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for excellent work, Councilman Catch.
Thank you.
So, just -- it does bring up a moment, I think I should point out, what's going on today, because initially, we were supposed to hear Bill 324 today. That's been deferred until February 27. And we're going to -- because it was felt by myself and my colleagues that the master plan needed to come first, and we are now on our second work session on the master plan. So, we have six folks signed -- three folks, four folks. Four people have signed up to provide some testimony today. We had a robust level of testimony in the past, and so, we'll continue on with that. And with that, I think we're moving on, right, Ms. Bel Castro, to Bill 224. I take it back. We're not at the master plan yet. We're at Bill 224, and this is Councilman Young, zoning regulations, live music entertainment. Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Bill 224 is -- after talking with constituents and also some business owners, there was a request for inclusion of manufacturing light as a potential area to have live music, or at least request a permit for it. Right now, it's available and allowable in manufacturing heavy, but not manufacturing light, so this would add manufacturing light to that allowable use. And just so everyone is aware, it still applies to all other regulations, so it doesn't give it by right. You would still need to apply for a permit. This just allows for, if you're zoned in that manufacturing area, that you can potentially get a permit if you meet all other safety requirements and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Councilman Young? Okay. Hearing on, Ms. Bel Castro, we have any speakers on this item?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Let us move to the next item, which is Resolution 4-24, and this is adoption of Master Plan 2030. Mr. Lafferty, I ask you to say a few remarks. Since you have provided testimony in the past, Mr. Lafferty, if you could do the Reader's Digest version today, that would be helpful.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. The administration requests the county council adopt Resolution 4-24 and the Master Plan 2030, as has been introduced to you. As you know, this is a 10-year comprehensive plan, looking at the county as a whole, not individual districts or communities, in order to identify the right growth patterns, as well as goals and actions that can really help fortify the growth and economic activity for the county's future. During our extensive process, we received over 4,000 comments from the public and engaged in identifying what we believe are best practices. One of the key elements is the place types that we've identified, with core retrofit areas, various place types and nodes. All of these were determined based on a series of metrics, and I would respectfully ask that if the council looks to these nodes or wants to see any changes, that it also make its decisions based on data, whether it's the same data or some additional data that they wish to introduce. There's also about 150 different goals and actions that we've identified in six different categories that we list as the vision framework. I certainly appreciate the comments that I've received to date from council members about the vision framework, and would welcome any other questions you may have. With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to be before you... With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to be before you again.
Thank you, Director Lafferty. Any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Let me just take a moment to acknowledge the outstanding work that the council members have engaged in, in reviewing the master plan. I was really impressed by the deep dive that the council members have taken in review of the Master Plan 2030. I think, Mr. Lafferty, that we should be on course with having this at the next legislative session. Again, my colleagues, thank you for the hard work that you have engaged in, in Master Plan 2030. It's a really important document for, to give us a guide moving through the next seven years and beyond. So any question? Councilman Marks?
Thank you. I want to echo those comments. Thank you, Director Lafferty, for the conversations we had. Thank the Department of Planning and the Planning Board for all their effort. This is a milestone document. It doesn't come along frequently. I've never voted on a master plan. The last master plan was actually adopted right before I took office. So it's important that we get this right. And I just want to thank all the stakeholders who got us to this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Marks. And Mr. Lafferty, I also want to thank you as well. I was neglected to do that in my opening remarks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any of the councilmen, or tell?
Director Lafferty, thank you for all your hard work on this. As a kind of a side note, we were looking at some of the old master plans from, and I was looking at the 1990 through 2000 plan. And we've come a long way as a county in that, you know, we really are, not that they weren't detailed master plans then, but we're really thinking of a lot of different things and different angles to the growth of the county. And when you look at that, you know, 30 years ago compared to what we're looking at now, it's a lot more involved. So thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Councilman. We are in a very different place than then, when now we have less land to be developed inside the Erdle and the need to really rethink our strategies as to how we're going to remain vibrant and economically viable. So, thank you.
Just to comment, Mr. Lafferty, in the changing times, a little off topic, but I think I'll mention it. So some of the zoning classifications that we've been looking at haven't been touched in over 50 years. And so I think about, what were we doing in 1974? And I look around the room, and some of the folks in this room weren't doing anything in 1974 because they weren't here yet. Carlos, you weren't here, were you? I don't think so. But in any case, I know what I was, I was buying records at the time, if you recall what they are, Stewart's. And yeah, there you go. We got some, some old schoolers back there. But in any case, I think you'll see that as we move ahead, that we will be touching some of those regulations that are more than, those zoning classifications that are more than 50 years old. So stay tuned. Any members, Councilman Jones?
It's good to see you, Director Lafferty. How are you doing today?
Thank you, Councilman. I'm doing well.
Good. I guess I had one question particularly about the commercial node versus a mobility node. I couldn't help but notice in my district where the metro center is, which is a transit-oriented development, that whole area was encompassed as a commercial node. Does that matter, that it doesn't say mobility?
No, sir, because we know that there's already rail service there, and we know that that's an important element to any future commercial growth or residential growth in that area. So really, the node denomination really says this is where we should focus attention for either new development or redevelopment if warranted.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any of the members have any questions or comments, additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Director Lafferty. Appreciate your work on this. And Ms. Bel Castro, I know we have, I think, I believe, four speakers signed up for this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Our first registered speaker was Delegate Bob Long. I know that he was on a tight schedule, and I did see him on earlier, but I think he had to leave. So I'll go on to the next speaker.
If the delegate should come back on, we'll make room for him as he comes on.
Absolutely. Our next speaker would be Alex Andelsman. Mr. Andelsman, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Good afternoon, council members, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Alex Andelsman, and I am here on behalf of the Maryland Building Industry Association, an organization with over 100,000 individuals and businesses across our state. Since it's been a few weeks since I last spoke, I wanted to take this opportunity to reiterate my testimony from last time. I want to begin by asking you all to please consider all of our revisions to Master Plan 2030 that we sent in our written testimony. We believe this plan should be easy to access and easy for everyone to understand. The way Master Plan 2030 was first shown online was confusing for many people. Many users found the ArcGIS Story Map, or the Master Plan 2030 hub, hard to figure out. Also, this plan, this format requires users to scroll through many links and extra pages, causing confusion about what's actually part of Master Plan 2030. We suggest having an official printed version for better clarity so we all can understand this crucial plan that will affect our members in the county for the next 10 years. Having a single traditional document in PDF form to consult will make it easier, more pleasant, and understandable for anyone viewing the document. Considering that this plan primarily focuses on land development, which is an area already regulated by other laws, introducing an entirely new set of definitions for commonly used terms in this document seems illogical. The list should be eliminated, or at the very least, any words already defined elsewhere should be removed. Several of the definitions provided in the glossary are inconsistent with existing definitions contained in the Baltimore County Code, Baltimore County Zoning Regulations, Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies, et cetera. Having more than one definition for a single term has caused confusion amongst our membership. The glossary also includes new definitions for previously undefined terms such as accessory dwelling unit and affordable housing. We believe that defining these terms in this matter does not allow for adequate public input or evaluation. The final point that I wanted to address is that the primary emphasis of Master Plan 2030 is the implementation of the place types map. This involves providing descriptions for each place type and subsequently dividing the county based on these types. However, the descriptions for certain place types, particularly established neighborhood and connection neighborhood, are not broad enough. It is recommended that revisions be made to encompass both existing and future uses, zoning, and development. Those exact revisions were outlined and have been forwarded to you in our written testimony. That is all I have for today. I thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Andelsman. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Andelsman? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Ms. Bel Castro. Could you announce the next speaker, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Rebecca Flora, who is here in person.
Secretary Flora, good to have you here.
Great. Happy to be here. Chairman Patoka and members of the county council, for the record again, my name is Rebecca Flora, Secretary, Maryland Department of Planning. I'm also an AICP credentialed planner with, I have to say, 40 years of experience. I was in high school in 1974. But here I am and happy to be here today to, you know, we get it that the state does not lean in and really control local plans. But I think that there is something that is important for me to be here and applaud today, and that's some of the great work that has been done. And I say that from a variety of perspectives, not only as a professional planner, but as actually someone who has been in the trenches developing communities, economic community development, real estate development, know what it takes. So some of you may be aware that Baltimore County Department of Planning was awarded the Sustainable Growth Award for Leadership in December of 2023. It was given by MDP, but a review committee of professional planners and economic development professionals throughout Maryland recommended the county's planning effort for its cutting-edge approach to provide data-driven information into the land use, planning, and decision-making process. It was my pleasure to be here and personally make this award because we found at MDP that this was a highly notable best practice in the state of Maryland and perhaps even nationally. So I'm here today to offer, as MDP, our perspective and professional opinion on the importance of really a component of your master plan, which is the retrofit mapping tool, and the implementation of this tool as part of decision-making process for identifying redevelopment areas at the local level. As you may be aware, I'm sure you are because you've all dove into this, the retrofit mapping tool was developed to identify suitable areas in the county for redevelopment by combining relevant demographic and economic data with desired outcomes that were expressed by Baltimore County's communities during the outreach sessions. The decision to pursue a retrofit analysis followed by the data-informed determination that the county would run out of developable land within the urban-rural demarcation line, U R D L, within eight years, based on current rate of construction and typical moderate build-out rate, was a really forward-thinking decision to really try to understand and let data really inform how to really accomplish that. The community input also supported general land preservation. So here we have it, this balance of having preserved land and yet really trying to ensure there were optimizing developable area. What we found during our review of the analysis of this particular tool that you have, and I applaud the fact that you have this to be able to use in your decision-making, is that the criteria that was used was very sound. It was very solid in terms of the analysis, and it was very metric and quantitative oriented, both in identifying vulnerable communities through public hotspots, vulnerability hotspots, low-income tax credit census, and the list goes on. The metrics that were used were really, I'm really amazed at what that small team was able to do. And I'm sure it'll be a model throughout the state. Another criteria was employment opportunity, and a weighted analysis was used for distance to things like hospitals, universities, employment centers, and other aspects. Funding resources, another criteria, in that what would provide access through community revitalization districts and sustainable communities was another way of really looking at this. And land use, existing zoning, high levels of impervious surfaces, large single ownership, other aspects of that. I won't go into all the details. I'm sure some of you know them well. Neighborhood assets, assets, including proximity to community resources such as schools, libraries, all the criteria you would want to look at in doing this type of analysis. Neighborhood deficiencies, areas without grocery stores, high numbers of gas stations, retail vacancies were prioritized, transportation access, weighted analysis once again. So these criteria and metric-driven, quantitative-oriented approach really does take us to an entirely new place in 2024 in terms of how we can make good land use development decisions. And I can't say this for a fact, but I think Baltimore County is leading the way in this regard, and you should be proud of having that tool available to you. The other thing that I really want to applaud and acknowledge is the process that was used in the tool's development. It follows some of the various visions that are part of the state planning, and that includes public participation, vision, another vision of growth areas in terms of concentrating those in existing population centers, community design, compact mixed-use walkable design consistent with community character and what people really want today, at least a good part, or a number of them that are looking for livable places. A range of housing densities, types and sizes were all considered, resource conservation, and of course, implementation. A planning resource such as the retrofit mapping tool is only as good as its implementation. It is a decision-making process and tool. And having that available to you just really enhances your ability that, once the plan is adopted, then you will go into the stage of really looking at, well, what happens there? And you'll continually have that tool available to you. It won't become stagnant as a paper document will. It's available to you essentially because we do have these things available to us now. So MDP encourages that it be used to its fullest extent because it reflects the priorities and principles also of the Moore administration. Obviously, that's this current administration, but I would say things like rebuilding to meet the needs of residents, being data-driven and heart-led, ensuring that all those that want to live in Maryland can do so. Overall, the retrofit mapping tool, which is a really important aspect of this plan, is invaluable to the realization of a vision expressed by county residents by combining spatial and demographic data to achieve desired outcome of targeted reinvestment and growth. It helps identify sites for investment and redevelopment. MDP supports the implementation of the tool and encourages county council to find a way to use it fairly and equitable in your processes. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I just felt compelled, because this was an award winner, that we come here and really applaud the work that was done and really encourage and help support in any way we can your use of this tool, because I think there are many counties that wish that they had this to help inform their decision-making. So thank you and good luck to you all.
Thank you, Secretary Flora. I really appreciate you taking the time to speak with us. I know your calendar must be extremely busy. Do any of the members have any comments, questions, or thoughts they'd like to share with Secretary Flora? Secretary Flora, in the AICP brotherhood and sisterhood, I join you in that. And I wanted to just say, I don't know if I'm going to violate any AICP ethics, but I'd like to designate my colleagues with, and let the minute show a temporary AICP for the good work that they have engaged in over the past few weeks on the Master Plan 2030. So again, my colleagues, it's a temporary AICP that expires at the end of today at midnight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Katch?
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Secretary, for coming today. You have really enlightened us. I wasn't going to ask this question, but since the chairman brought it up, will you do me a favor and check on his credentials? Because I, you know, he's passing himself off as a planner. And it just so happens that my wife has the same exact degree that he has from the same school, but she was a schoolteacher in Baltimore County. So anyhow, I, yeah, I just want to make sure he's up to date.
I will be sure to do that. And I will say, seeing the AICP exam and maintaining it over the years is not an easy task.
I'm sure it's not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Katch, and thank you. Councilman Jones?
I guess I want to say thank you so much for coming and sharing your thoughts and comments with us, Secretary Flora. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And like I said, I'm really thrilled that we have this model to point to in the state. So thank you all for all your work.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Secretary Flora, Councilman Mark.
Thank you very much for coming. This county council is going to be tackling a lot of things once we're done the master plan, including the adequate public facilities ordinance, and I hope we still have the power to execute that. So thank you very much for coming. We appreciate you showing up today.
We're trying to stay as engaged and helpful as possible. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, who is our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Pamela Shaw, who is here in person.
Ms. Shaw, welcome. Ms. Shaw, I appreciate your interest in county council activities.
I have a lot of interest in county council. Councilman Patoka and the rest of the board, it's my pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Pamela Shaw, and I live in District 3. I want to thank all of you for taking so much of your time to read and listen to all the testimony that's been given from members of the county and my neighbors all over the county. And I know it has been a lot for you to do. As someone who travels all over the county like you, I recognize the need for revitalization, both residential and commercial, along the ulterior routes, particularly those below the Beltway. As was presented, there's a lot of older housing and commercial properties that are in desperate need of help and revitalization. But there is a big difference between revitalization and rampant redevelopment. The master plan does not identify and target locations that need the help the most, the areas that can most benefit from a shot in the arm. Instead, it unleashes a way- Instead, it unleashes a wave of redevelopment that more likely than not is going to be done not where it needs to be done the most, but just where it's more fiscally desirable. The master plan does not address water, sewer, roads, electric, public safety, and classrooms that would be necessary to support a wave of housing development that this plan would unleash. To quote a particular councilman, "This plan puts development ahead of infrastructure." I urge the County Council to reject certain aspects of the master plan to ensure a more targeted and strategically planned redevelopment where it is needed most in Baltimore County. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts for Ms. Shaw?
Thank you.
Okay, hearing none. Again, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Appreciate your interest in County Council activities. Ms. Bel Castro, is that the last speaker?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, so now we're going to move to, this is an exciting one. This is really exciting. This is a Council Resolution 6-24, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to talk about Resolution 6-24. When it was introduced at the last legislative session, it's been under consideration and discussion internally for a number of months now. Specifically, it is the change to our rules and reforming our process for how we hear legislation and also amend legislation. And through that process of making changes, there were a few other specifics within the code, excuse me, not the code, the resolution and the appendix where our rules are found, that also needed updating as well. So specifically, we'll be changing public comment provisions. In an effort to increase public participation, the council has streamlined the process for public comments during work sessions. Gender-neutral language, gender-specific language throughout the appendix has been changed, where it's made sure that we have included gender-neutral language where there was gender-specific language within our rules and appendixes. Advanced notice of agendas, agendas and related documents will be made available to both council members and the public at least five days prior to regular meetings, promoting greater transparency and allowing for informed public input. Streamlined legislative process, the resolution outlines clear procedures for the introduction, consideration, and withdrawal of legislation, including bills and resolutions introduced by the county executive. Public engagement in legislation and amendments, each bill introduced will be subject to public commentary as well as discussion twice during the life of a bill, which at the moment is 30 days, and that's currently in the code, not in our rules. This ensures community voices will be heard and that there will be ample time to consider legislation and amendments. Introduction and circulation of amendments, amendments to legislation must be circulated to council members and posted on the council's website by 8:00 a.m. on the day of the legislative meeting to be considered. This ensures all members have adequate time to review proposed changes before any decisions are made. Deadlines for amendments, amendments introduced after the 10:00 a.m. deadline on a legislative meeting date requires a suspension of the rules for consideration, emphasizing the importance of timely submissions for orderly deliberations. As well as timely consideration of resolutions, new rules have been established for the introduction and consideration of resolutions with a specific focus on ensuring that these items are addressed in a timely manner to prevent undue delays to council actions. As well as just in keeping in the spirit of what we're doing here, the bills have a 30-day lifecycle. Resolutions and fiscal matters do not have that same restriction. However, in the spirit of what we're trying to attempt to do with our bills, this resolution, I'm going to make a motion at the legislative session next week where we would have voted on this to extend the life of it, so that we'll get two work sessions to be considered, and then voted on in the following legislative session, giving this resolution a 30-day lifecycle in the spirit of what we're trying to change related to our bill process. Also, I'd point out that this is accurate to the bill as it's been introduced. There have already been conversations among the members for technical changes that will be considered, also relating to timelines for amendment introduction as well as other specific language related to the county executive's bills and his bills in our own process when he's requested by the chair. That is a comprehensive explanation of what we've put in Resolution 624. Happy to take any questions or discuss anything specific.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Ash.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a few comments about this proposed resolution, and I want to start out by complimenting Councilman Young for all his work in, with this legislation. It's very obvious to me that Councilman Young is using his experiences as a state legislator, former state legislator, and also he's been in our council since December, so has had the opportunity to see how the council operates compared to how the legislature operates. And I think that he's taken the best of both to develop this resolution. What this resolution does is it gives the public more opportunity for input, but the input, unlike sometimes in the past, is going to be up to date in that the amendments that people are introducing have to be in by a certain date so that these amendments can be shown to the public. So we have a situation where the public will be part of the process, and with my experiences in legislative bodies, as a legislator, we benefit from public input and public opinion. And I just want to again say, I want to congratulate Councilman Young. I want to thank him for his hard work, and I look forward to supporting this resolution. I look forward to the council hearing from our constituency more than we ever have. And I also would like to be a co-sponsor of the resolution as well. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you, Councilman Young, for all of your work. It sure is, it's the right way to go. Our county executive talks about openness and transparency, and indeed, our administration is more open and transparent than in the past, and this will have the same effect on our council, and this is a good day, very good day, for the people of Baltimore County. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. And Councilman Marks.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman Catch. You hit on it. Both you and Councilman Young bring your experiences as state legislators and have helped us reform our policies. Councilman Catch, I remember you talking about special ordering bills when you first got here, and that allowed us to change our policy so that we can delay final votes on bills. And Councilman Young, you've done a terrific job over the past year assembling all these comments and coming up with a constructive package of reforms that I think will be better for everyone. I said this earlier, this council has steadily moved in the direction of more openness and transparency. There was a time when these hearings were not publicized, and with each year, we seem to be making it a better place. So thank you, Councilman Catch, earlier, but Councilman Young, thank you for your yeoman's work. Very nice job.
Councilman Jones.
Yes, I guess I want to echo your comments as well as Councilman Catch's comments, and thank you very much, Councilman Young, for your hard work and dedication. We appreciate it very much, and it, along with so many other things, will continue to make us better, more transparent. So thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could, one.
Absolutely, Councilman Young.
I know that Councilman Catch requested to be amended on as a co-sponsor, believe Councilman Ortel, you'd also express interest, so that makes everyone is a co-sponsor as well as me as the sponsor. So I anticipated to be unanimous, even working through some of the amendments. I also just want to say, I appreciate the thanks. I just wanted also to make sure that from my side, there's nothing that was included in this bill that came just from me. The last 12 months of discussion as well as experience working with you all is reflected in this. So while I volunteered to do the work and also put it out there for folks that don't know, I've been talking about rules and process for so long, they're probably tired of me talking about it. I was happy to do it, but also it wouldn't have been possible 12 months ago, coming in brand-new, and this has all been a group effort from all of you, so I appreciate the willingness to debate and discuss the issue over the last 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Young. Councilman Crandall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Young, the bill, your resolution would not have passed a year ago simply because you had not been through your hazing period yet?
You did reference that when I first got here, didn't you?
I think I did, yes. But I do appreciate your work and your leadership on this. You recognize that we could function better as a body, better serve our constituency, and frankly, I think make our lives a little bit easier as well in terms of how we deliberate, contemplate, and discuss pieces of legislation. And I think you're not only drawing on your experience in the General Assembly that Councilman Marks alluded to, but also your experience in the last year where we dealt with some bills that had moving parts to them, different ideas came up the same day that we were due to discuss them, and things get a little complicated. And one of the things that Councilman Marks mentioned is we, a few years ago, we gave the council the ability to extend the life of a bill so we could further deliberate on it. And I think the measures that you're proposing here is sort of an extension of that idea and providing some orderliness to how we approach amendments. And also, just a lot of the input that we get from our constituency comes late in the process, and a lot of times, we take that information and the ideas from our constituents and incorporate those into bills, and now there'll be just extra time for the community to weigh in on things that we're contemplating, as well as give us, as I said, more time for our own discussions on matters. And using this resolution, that's an example of it, because this wasn't drafted in one day, and you said, here it is, give me the votes. It was, let's talk about this, what are good ideas, what are bad ideas? And then, in the spirit of the legislation you're proposing, is that we actually hold off on the vote and not vote on this next week? Is that still your intention? Did you mention that?
Still the intention. So we'll have two work sessions as if it was a bill, this being a resolution having a different timeline.
So we're actually following the model that the resolution is proposing?
Absolutely. And that being said, without any rules related to an amendment process, the amendments that I know we've been talking about for small changes will be posted to the website as if the resolution was already in place.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Any other members? So let me just say a few words. One is, thank you, Councilman Young. This is a terrific piece of work and was sorely needed for, I've been on the council for five years, and I'm glad that we have finally got to this point. So let me just say that transparency can be a word, or it can be an action, and in this case, it's an action thanks to Councilman Young, who's taken a deep dive into how we do our work, how we review amendments that come before us on different pieces of legislation. The breadth of issues that we deal with, legislative issues that come before this council, is enormous. It could be a pothole, or it could be a master plan, or it could be some other policy, bills that have policy, broad policy implication. And sometimes, we are asked to be subject matter experts on the fly, and we're not. We have to learn, and this gives us an opportunity to learn about issues that we will deliberate on and amendments that we will deliberate on and discuss and hear testimony about. And it also gives us an opportunity to share with participants, with our constituents, with residents, what these amendments are, what they mean, allow participants to have some level of feedback. And to me, it's the way government should be at its best. It's kind of, if we're not interacting in a clear and transparent way with the residents that we serve, then we're not doing our jobs as well as we can. And so I just want to say thank you for getting, moving the needle in the right direction on this particular matter, and certainly, this was a goal of ours at the beginning of the year, so it's really good to like, say we've knocked this one out, but it's not the last one we're going to knock out. We've got more progress to make. And I will say, I've said this since the beginning of 2023, that the council you see before you is, it's a thoughtful body, it's a strong governing body, and I think the way we have deliberated has been good, but it'll get better, and thanks to this piece of work. We're going to be trying to serve the residents that we represent as best as we can. So thank you again, Councilman Young. Any of the other members? Okay, we're going to move right along to items page, we're going to move on to Ramona Brown Carter from the DEI. She's DEI Program Manager. And this is on page four. If anyone wants to follow along. Ms. Carter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen of the council. The administration is requesting the approval of a contract with Daniel Sims Consulting Group, LLC, to complete a countywide equity assessment. This is for the executive branch. The purpose of the equity assessment is to identify the areas of opportunities throughout the county government where equitable decision-making and performance can be strengthened to best meet the needs of the community. The assessment is divided into three phases, the first being an evaluation of county policies, programs, and practices in order to determine where the county equitable decision-making and performances excels and where opportunities for them to exist to be strengthened. The second phase of the assessment is to develop a diversity, equity, and inclusion strategic plan to outline the various strategies and activities the county will take to strengthen the equity focus. The DEI strategic plan will serve as a complementary to the county's enterprise strategic plan. Specifically, Goal Three, Equitable Decision-Making. The third and final phase of this work includes training for county leaders, managers, supervisors, and staff that is based upon the findings of the evaluations and goals of this DEI strategic plan. The value of this contract is $280,000, $1,494. The period of this performance commences upon the council's approval and will not exceed past December 31, 2026. This contract was completely solicited by the county's request for approval process and has an MBE goal of 30% per task. The contract will be managed by the Division of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. The Division is responsible for enriching the county's fair and equitable policies and practices by working in coordination with other offices and departments to promote equity-informed planning, policies, development, and decision-making. Thank you. Mrs. Brown Carter? Yes, sir.
Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Or tell.
I have a question, Mrs. Brown Carter. Question, was this competitively bid?
Yes, sir.
So how many other contractors?
Give me one second. Let me just make sure that I don't have that answer with me. I don't have that answer right now, but I can certainly get it back to you.
And the purpose of this study is, is this internal as far as how we interact as employees or how we interface with the public?
How we interface with the public.
Okay, so one of the things that I think a few of us are struggling with, and I won't speak for my colleagues, but we consistently hear, we talk about an equity lens in this county all the time, but yet, I was at my town hall meeting, and probably 35% to 40% of the respondents there were talking about And we sometimes fail to understand what the department's doing at DEI with some of these things. And I know it's a new department, and I'm, you know, not trying to be negative here, but we don't have a good understanding of what we're doing as a county. Because what I heard last week was kind of disturbing, it was concerning that we're not addressing these things. And I feel like we're all not real sure what we're doing, what our direction is. I'm hoping maybe this helps us, but I'm not sure that this isn't just, you know, a consulting contract that's being awarded with ARPA money and, you know, to the tune of another $280,000 for a study that, are we going to use it? Are we going to implement this? Or is it really going to help us with the public? Because in the end, you know, our citizens are who we need to, you know, we need to give them better lives and a better quality of life in dealing with the county as well.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rogers?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for acknowledgement. Councilman Ortel, there were seven bidders on this contract, so it was indeed competitively bid through our procurement process. With respect to equitable decision-making, as Ms. Brown Carter indicated, within our current enterprise-wide strategic plan, there is a goal around equitable decision-making within the government, period. And over the last five years, we've moved, we've made movement in the direction of, you know, self-examination and what it is that we, as county government, should be doing to ensure that our citizens, our resources, how we make decisions are absolutely with an equity, done with an equity lens. So that particular goal, we made progress. Our updated strategic plan for the second term is about to be published. And within the publication, it shows the activities that we have been able to accomplish. But what we've found, just from the work that we're doing internally, there's a lot more work to be done. Our first-ever equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion report came out in December. And if you have not seen it, I would ask, in Ms. Peoples Brown's absence, she's still away on maternity leave, but when she comes back, I'm sure she'd be happy to talk further with you. But there's a full report on the types of things that we're doing. This contract is being requested to continue that work. I'll give you a perfect example of how our decision-making with equity and diversity lens is playing itself out in the community. We had a program for many years in Epps in terms of tree planting. But with an equity lens, we reexamined that whole program to determine if we were equitably looking at where there's a need for tree canopy and improvement. And tying that with some of the other social indicators, community indicators, like health conditions, like asthma, where trees are, where trees aren't, doing geomapping. And that's all a part of our movement toward equitable decision-making. That had never been done here in the county. So those are examples of how we're trying to look internally about how we make our decisions. In all of our budget deliberations now, a member of the DEI staff, as well as the sustainability staff, sit in on those discussions to make sure we're thinking through our decision-making about budget allocations, whether we're looking at social indicators and determinants of positive community outcomes when we're making decisions. So this is just a continuation of some of the work that we started in the first term.
And I appreciate that, but last, our last meeting, we had a group of people, two of which were African-American families that have lived in eastern Baltimore County for over 75 years. And the county is, wants them to pay $60,000 to hook up to a sewer line that was just sprung upon them, you know, several weeks ago. And DEI hasn't talked to them. I have minority communities all over my district. I could use someone from DEI to help me navigate some of the programs that might be available to them. But we're not seeing that. We talk about it, but there's not a lot of action. And this is another study of, we could turn this money to other things potentially. I'm all about identifying more opportunities, but we need this department to do more and be out in the public's eye doing things. Because we have plenty of things that can be done right now. We talked about the tree planting. That was a great program, but the county hadn't really identified where they were going to do it. I actually did that in my district. I identified those neighborhoods. I knew where they were. I knew they were underserved, and we pointed the re-tree programs to that thing. But I guess what I'm, you know, again, I'm complaining here, but we have this department. We need more action out of them and less studies and, you know, pontification, I guess.
I'd say to you, sir, the journey of a thousand miles begins with the first step.
I understand.
Prior to this administration, we didn't even have a DEI division. We worked diligently to implement and codify that so that it would be sustainable in years to come. I'd also say that, and I take personal pride in this work, because Ms. Savitra Peoples Brown, who I brought to Baltimore County with me when I came as the CAO just five years ago, is now the head of DEI, and she'll be here while, as I'm planning to depart. But sustainability and movement toward the equity and diversity and inclusion that's necessary in the counties. Because I agree with you, that conversation was very interesting last week because sewer projects happen in older communities around the county as these sewer systems age and begin to fail. So when we look at equity and where these sewer projects, just use that one as an example, and look at the communities where they are and the representation of people of color in those communities, then you'll begin to see that there's lots of work that Baltimore County government internally needs to do. So I wouldn't think it'd be pontification. I think it would be proactive action to try to move this agenda forward, where in some parts of the country, people are trying to abolish DEI. So I take pride that the county has taken this step and that we're moving forward. So I take a little pride in thinking that it's more than a pontification in the DEI program and where we're moving. So this is just another step that we're seeking, we're kindly seeking, to move the DEI agenda forward within Baltimore County. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Councilman Marks and Councilman Crandall? Oh, sorry. Councilman Ortel, will you finish? I'm sorry. Let me, I apologize.
And I would just say, we need DEI to be out there more. I would love to take a tour with a DEI person and show them some of my communities that are, have been historically underserved.
We'll be happy to make that happen.
You know, like I said, it's very frustrating when we're out there doing the work and we're not getting any support. We hear these words, equity lens, but when I ask for things from the administration, and often it's with an equity lens, we're not getting the help. And I can give you six different examples of things that aren't getting done, that I've asked for, for neighborhoods that desperately need it. And all you got to do is drive down and look at them, and you can tell that they've been neglected. And it's just very frustrating when we're spending money on things to do studies and people need help now. So that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Councilman Ortel. Councilman Marks, and then Councilman Crandall.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Ortel. You referenced what I'm going to talk about. And Ms. Rogers, thank you for the work you've done over these years. And I've supported, I think, almost all of these initiatives. And I think it's important to have a workforce that looks like Baltimore County and that is sensitive to the needs of everyone in Baltimore County. I think the frustration is, is that, like last week, we could have slowed down that proposal, and we should have taken that with an equity lens. We didn't. And that's what I had asked. I had asked for that not to come up at that time. You know, we have a $300,000 budget on this. That would pay for a third of the cost of that sewer project, probably, at least the, you know, the part that the taxpayers have to pay. And I think what Councilman Ortel is trying to say is, we need to keep all of us doing a better job of this and putting these principles into practice. I mean, we really have got to look at the way we do these sanitary sewer projects. And that project shouldn't have come forward last week, just my two cents. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my comments are along the same line. Yeah, I feel like, man, we have gotten, how many consultants have we hired? Consulting contract after consulting contract? And I thought that our directors were supposed to have a strategic plan for their department. And I don't, do we need a consultant to come in to Baltimore County and tell us whether we're being fair or not? We can't figure that out for ourselves? We need to know what's fair and what's not, otherwise, none of us would be in the positions that we're in. So, I mean, is it fair that an underserved community of Eastwood can't get anybody from DPW on the phone when they don't have any water or low water pressure for days, and they get no response from anybody? Is that equitable? No, it's not. It's fair. We know it's not fair, so fix that. I don't need a consultant to tell me that that community was screwed. You can look at the inequity that has existed for years in road resurfacing. I've said it for years. County Executive, to his credit, heard me out when I first told him that the 7th District is way behind on road repairs in terms of everywhere else in Baltimore County. Study was done by our own people, I believe, with some technology, that showed that the 7th District is way behind in Councilman Ortel's district. The 6th District is right there with us. So it was equitable that we got a non-political distribution of funds that the county executive did, right, Ms. Rogers? First term, I mean, first year in first term, where there was an equal distribution of money and mileage, road mileage that was done throughout Baltimore County. But my point was, where is the equity when you have one district that has been neglected for years? Shouldn't that piece of the pie, if we're talking about equity, be a little bit bigger? I don't need a consultant to tell me that. I can just look at it, and I have it. So I'm not sure, I don't know. I mean, for, I just, the only consultant that I need to know about what's right and wrong is the man upstairs. So, and that's what we're talking about. Are we doing the right thing or not? And we got to pay someone $280,000 to tell us?
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Ms. Rogers, I think what you're
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. I think what you hear, I'm sorry, did you have a comment, Councilman Young?
Just a few questions, too. So the, is it, is this through, sorry, you said this is through ARPA funds?
Yes.
Gotcha. How many folks are in your department?
All in my department currently, right now. We have 12 members in our department.
12 members. Not a lot for a whole county. A lot of the stuff that the other members have brought up, too, were legit in terms of, one, their experience, and, two, what their expectations are. There have been a lot of things that we've had come in front of us that could have and probably should have been looked at through an equity lens, no matter what that means to individually between all of us. As I read the three phases here, part of this, correct me if I'm wrong, of doing this is so that department heads outside of your department are also thinking that way, so that when we have something come in front of us that has not used that approach, or neglected a community, or forgotten about it, or has systemically, we expect DEI to know that which communities in ours have been neglected or not, that the departments themselves are thinking of it like you are, versus putting it all on you to then tell one department that they should have done it this way or that way. It's, am I understanding that right from the purpose of this assessment and
Right, correct.
Training?
Yes, sir, correct.
So hopefully that the other departments will also be thinking on all the other things we ask them to think about, but also this. So when they come in front of us and we get to ask them, did you think about this neighborhood? Or what did you use in terms of your department's process for determining where to put, or how to engage with a community that's going to now be charged $6,000, $4,000 to put something, to put a sewage line in, or another line in? What process did that department follow related to that overarching goal of diversity and equity? And then they can answer that, and if they don't, then we can hit them for it because they're, or at least know that we can hit them for something that they've been informed of and then chose not to follow versus not informing or expecting them to have that same approach as the staff from DEI. I guess just wanted to clarify that a lot of the stuff that's been discussed, some of this would address, because right now, our departments aren't using that same lens, at least from my perspective. And again, I haven't been here as long as some of the other members, because I think we can all point to communities that could be looked at differently and should be approached differently. But I also know from dealing with departments, that that's not always the primary approach. You're not even in the list of boxes to check in terms of how to focus resources or focus programming. So I just wanted to, from my understanding, I wanted to clarify that in terms of staff as well as the intent of doing this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Marks?
That's a very fair point. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman Catch?
Thank you very much. I just need to say that I'm certain that every member of the county council can identify parts of their districts which have been neglected over the years, whether it be paving, whether it be a high crime rate in those areas, whether it be schools that aren't performing as they need to perform. And, you know, I would like to see our county and our county administration really bring attention to those areas. And let's use the resources that we have in this county to go in to those communities and provide services that will lower the crime rate, that will improve the schools, that will end up giving especially the young people in those communities an opportunity to realize the American dream. Because I'll tell you, if we don't do this, these young people in these districts will end up repeating the same kind of lifestyle, generation after generation. And we owe it to these communities, to the young people, to provide the same opportunity that every other child and community has in Baltimore County. And, you know, I don't, yeah, the study, I understand what the study is all about. However, if the administration, if our government points out the areas that need help and what we're going to do to help, I think that will be the message to all county departments. And so I would hope that the administration would take a look at what I've just said and go in that direction, because I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Catch.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Crandall.
And Councilman Catch, I agree with you, and these are things that you recognize as important. Mr. Chair. Yes, Councilman Crandall. If I, and Councilman Catch, I agree with you. And these are things that you recognize as important and in order to create fairness throughout Baltimore County. My point is, I'm not so sure that we need a consultant to tell us what those things are. That was my point. And a case in point about a historically neglected community that I think has been treated fairly under the current administration, that's the Turner Station community. Ms. Rogers, we just had, I forget the actual, that was Mr. Jackson that testified from the Turner Station community. And there's a long list of things that have been done to support that community, both in infrastructure and services. And I believe that those things were done. We did, I think, one or two pilots for the, for the Lions Homes. Is that right, Terry? I think we did two pilots for Lions Homes. So lower-income residents of those homes could get refurbished apartments and get modern stuff. So we can make the right decisions. We can operate on a fair and equitable basis. Just make the point again that I don't know if we need, you know, 280 grand for someone to tell us what those decisions should be.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Ms. Rogers?
Colleagues, this is one area I'm going to push back because, number one, a lot of times, we don't know what we don't know. That's first. But I encourage you, when the strategic plan, there's an accomplishments section, look in the strategic plan in terms of what we have accomplished over the last five years in this area in equitable decision-making. That whole agenda is around recognition. The first step in anything is recognition of where we need to make a change in how we make decisions, how we allocate resources. And I can relate and really smile about a number of the things that you're talking about. Councilmember Crandall, you're absolutely right. The paving piece of this, we now have the paver program that uses data to determine how many miles of paving we need to do, where we're doing it, how we're doing it, how often we have to do it. That all came out of discussions about equitable decision-making. God bless you. Additionally, we can look at it in recreation and parks, what we've done there to determine equitable decision-making about resources around the county, in all parts of the county, the things that come out of the town halls. But I feel like this, this didn't get broke in five years. This has been years, as you've indicated, years of the lack of looking at things with an equitable lens. This study is to help us as the government understand where we need to continue to press forward to be equitable. That's what this is about. It's not rhetoric. You're talking about it yourselves. We didn't stumble on those things by accident. It occurred because we had dialogue. But there are still many, many places within the government where we need to understand that that we don't know. And implicit bias about things, how we talk about different parts of the community, the people in those communities, and how we respond as a government. That's what this study is about. And I'll rest my case. I'll start where, I'll end where I started. A journey of 1,000 miles begins with the first step.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
And we're taking lots of steps, but we have a long way to go.
Thanks, Ms. Rogers. Councilman Ortell?
I'd like someone from DEI to come to my office and take a tour of my district with me.
We will certainly do this. Yes, sir. We're happy to make that happen.
That's what I want. I'm just frustrated when I point these things out and all I get is, you know, words, equity lens.
Happy to make it happen, sir.
But I mean, I have a high school, overly high school, that has an auditorium that is dysfunctional. When you put too many lights on, the light spark. 90% African-American, 10% Hispanic, can't get the money for it.
And how long has that been in place, sir?
It was, it happened two years ago. And we asked the administration for help and we're not getting it. And I'll give you 10 other examples of things that I need help with in neighborhoods that are predominantly minorities. And it's just, like I said, it's-
We're happy to do that, more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Thank you, and then thank you, Councilman Ortell. Let me just offer an observation. So Ms. Rogers and Ms. Brown Carter, I think part of the frustration you're hearing is, it's a couple of things converging at one time. I think you have a brand-new agency, relatively speaking, with DEI. It's, it hasn't, it's not like a DPW or a planning or an agent, or a budget agency that's typically around in government. It's new. And similar to the Inspector General's Office, it's always difficult to grasp a new agency. So we have this new agency and converging at the same time, you have a county council that in many respects is the closest touch to a county resident that they have with government. So county council members are out every night and during the day at meetings. And so when there's a concern from a neighborhood, from a resident, typically it comes to us to try to figure out. So we, we're getting this information, and especially those that represent older inter-beltway communities, neighborhoods that are marginalized, you know, the issues are enormous. And so I think we're trying to, we're marrying, we're trying to figure out how to resolve this, how to have this new agency weave into that, to that problem-solving. The issue of food insecurity and food security weaves into that formula as well. And then we talk a lot about data-driven governance. And so data-driven governance is really important. But in that, you also have to weave in, and we're struggling with Bill 324 and the master plan with this, but data-driven government is great, but you have to weave into that community sentiment in order to do this job that we all are committed to well. And so we've just got to find that sweet spot of how do we take the data, how do we look at community sentiment, and then how do we solve the problem? And I think we're all up for that challenge. And so one of the things I think we don't understand what the work program of the DEI office is, I'm hoping that during our budget deliberations, perhaps a helpful, what would be helpful to us is that if we called the DEI office to kind of take us through what your budget, like, one thing that came to mind on this was, was this in the budget? And, but now, given the deliberations that have taken place, that's kind of a question that, for me, is not necessary anymore because I feel like we don't understand it enough to really know. So I look forward to having that office, if my colleagues see fit, to have the DEI office come in and maybe we can understand what the office does a little better and then we'll be in a better place when we're reviewing items like this. So any other comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Rogers, for your passion on this issue. And thank you, Ms. Brown Carter.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone. And let's move on to the next issue. I've got to regain my composure here. And we are, David Skinner, Fair Housing Manager from the Department of HCD. Welcome, Mr. Skinner. Thank you for hanging in there. Ms. Schindel, we're going to get to you soon. Yes, Mr. Skinner, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me, Councilman. County council members, good evening. The administration via the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, seeks your approval for a sole-source procurement agreement with Equal Rights Center, Inc. This partnership aims to conduct fair housing testing services throughout the county, aligning with the nation's best practices to eliminate discrimination in rental applications, home sales, and mortgage lending. Mandated by HUD, Community Development Block Grant Funds, the 2016 HUD Voluntary Compliance Agreement, and the Baltimore County Consolidated Plan, DHCD is committed to affirmatively furthering fair housing. DHCD proposes allocating part of its CDBG budget to engage ERC, Equal Rights Center, a nonprofit qualified fair housing enforcement organization. ERC will conduct comprehensive fair housing testing across the county through interactions with the housing industry's initial application processes of home rental, home sales, and mortgage lending in order to ensure federal and legal compliance, identify noncompliant policies through mystery shopping, and provide valuable feedback to enhance customer service in our local housing industry. ERC's unique, I'm sorry, ERC's unique expertise, established reputation in the Washington, DC metro region, and efficiency make them singularly, make the, I'm sorry, make them the singular entity capable of meeting the county's highest standards. Anarundel, Hartford, and Howard Counties have also sought ERC services reflecting the shared urgency. DHCD is eager to collaborate with ERC, confident in their ability to deliver prompt, thorough results, ensuring county compliance with regulatory deadlines. Engaging with ERC illustrates the county's commitment to fair housing principles, promoting equal opportunity for all regardless of protected characteristics. DHCD appreciates the council's thoughtful consideration and we remain available for any necessary discussions or clarifications.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts they'd like to share with Mr. Skinner?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Councilman Catch?
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Skinner, if an individual feels that he or she has been discriminated against in housing, would they report that to your office or who would they, who would that be reported to?
Yes, yes, sir. It would come through my, through my office. But there are also many different avenues. A report could come through the Office of Housing, which is separate from where I sit in DHCD. It could come from another entity who's just working with that individual, maybe a caseworker or another service, a community service organization.
Can you tell me how many instances were reported last year?
That precise number I do not have, but I can get back to you with that.
I'd appreciate it. Hopefully it's a low number. I hope. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Any of the members have any additional questions, comments, or thoughts? Hearing none, thank you so much, Mr. Skinner. And you were the penultimate speaker, and now we're going to go to the last speaker, and that is Ms. Deborah Schindel from Property Management. Thank you for waiting, Ms. Schindel.
No problem, sir. I'm convinced you're saving the best for last, like I said.
Yes.
Every week. Good evening, Councilman Chair and members of the county council. The administration is requesting an approval of a contract with Siemens Industry, Inc. to provide software maintenance as part of a building automation system, BAS as we call it, to control the HVAC equipment. The BAS system works in conjunction with various HVAC equipment and allows remote monitoring of temperatures and to assist with troubleshooting in equipment. In no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor under this agreement exceed the sum of the county council-approved appropriation during the term, entire term of this agreement. This is a five-year contract, and this is basically a sole-source contract due to the fact it is a software company that provides this. It's proprietary. We did choose it for best qualified and experienced. This is a contract that's used not only by property management, but it's also used by the detention center. And we have 14 locations that use this particular Siemens contract.
Thank you, Ms. Schindel. Do any of the members have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Councilman-
So you're coordinating with Director Pesterfield on that?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Yes, we have a very strong working relationship.
Oh, yeah. Great. Thank you.
Do any of the members have any additional questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Schindel. Do you have one other item?
Final one. Property Management is requesting approval of a contract for four companies, Murphy, Difanhofer, Inc., Johnson, Marionum, and Thomas, Frederick Ward Associates, and Lutira Thomas LLC for space planning and programming design services for commercial offices. In no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor exceed an amount of $600,000 for the entire life of this agreement. This is a one-year with four, one-year contract with four one-year agreements. We did have an MBE goal of 20%, and one of the actual primes is an MBE, which is Lutero Thomas. This is an RFP process through purchasing. Four companies obviously were selected and we will rotate the work through them. It was competitively bid, and it also goes through a selection committee process so that we understand that we are also getting experienced, qualified, best-value individuals. I can take any questions if you have some.
I have a question, Chair.
Councilman Ortell?
Director Schindel, so what are we doing here?
This is a space planning. If you're familiar with space planning, we may, instead of using an architectural firm to do our space planning, quite often, if it's a small job, where we're doing, we had, for instance, a new WIC center that we did out in Racers Town, we had to hire a space planner to help develop the design of the interior space. And it is much cheaper for us as a county to use a space planner than going through an architectural firm and paying a higher rate of overhead.
$600,000 a fixed figure, is that we can spend up to?
Spend up to.
If we need it.
If we need it, yes.
Okay. Do you have specific projects that you know you're going to need this for coming up?
Not right now. We know that we are currently and have used the other one, the current contract that is going out, we have used, like I said, for the Racers Town WIC and to retrofit some other spaces. We may anticipate using them, but we don't at this time. We're currently, everything we're using is on the old contract.
So, Ms. Schindel, this would not be an architectural firm? It would be like an interior design firm?
Some of these are architectural firms, but they're much lower, they're using a space planner and not an architect.
Right. So the billable hours are different?
The billable hours are much cheaper than going through, yes. So it's more economical for the county.
Thank you. Councilman Crandall, do you have a question?
Unless another member has something on topic, I just have something off topic.
Any of the members have anything for Ms. Schindel? Well, thank you so much, Ms. Schindel. Was it for Ms. Schindel or for, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank you. I know that you've been in touch with Director Smith and Reckon Parks on our park issue down our way. And I appreciate your support on that to help reach a solution.
You are quite welcome.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schindel. I think that completes our session. Thanks, everyone, for joining us today.
Thank you.